Good evening. Welcome to the Pullman City Council Meeting for this Tuesday, August 9th. And if you don't have a chair, we know we can get you one. But I think there's one extra there if you want one. Nice to have a great attendance. So obviously, there's some topics here tonight that have a lot of interest. With that, Dee, how about taking role?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Dubin.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight, Concerts in the Park continues tomorrow with Solstice at 6:00 at Rainy Park. I was there last week for the Concert in the Park with Casa La Vista, and that was a great concert. Little festivals, sporting events. So we got adult coed softball tournament, youth three-on-three basketball tournament, 5K fun run. All events occur on August 20th, and you'll need to sign up by August 12th. Second Saturday, August 13th, at Sunnyside Park from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., headlined by picket ball tournament. Players can register at the City of Pullman website. Rainy Park Pool, August 21st, will be the last day to enjoy the pool this season. Careview Roundabout is scheduled to be closed for paving all the way through the morning of August 11th. Outdoor irrigation, reminder that please try and do your irrigating early morning, sometimes between 9:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. to reduce the evaporation from the afternoon sun. Watering every other day or less and keeping a timer and reducing the duration of your watering. WSU Student Move-In is August 12th to the 14th. And the airport terminal will be doing some groundbreaking tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning out at the site for the new terminal. And at this time, I would like to present Megan Guido with the AWC Certificate of Municipal Leadership. So at this point.
That was fast.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, for just coming onboard, you got the certificate of leadership rather quickly. So congratulations for that. A number of us have the certificate of leadership, few of us have the advanced. So again, congratulations on that. Next item on the agenda tonight is the Police Chief Confirmation of Appointment. As you know, Gary Jenkins retired for a few days and then became the interim Police Chief for WSU Police Department to try and help them get through some issues right now. But our longstanding commander and officer Jake Opken North has been with us for a good number of years. Has done a fantastic job. He's gone through the interview process. We did have a national search for this. So tonight, I am asking you to confirm the appointment of Jake as our new Police Chief.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Move and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's good, Jake. And we'll do the swearing in on Friday. Next, I have appointment recommending Daniel Owens as our Library Services Director. And Dan has been with us for a number of years as our adult supervisor. He's filled in his interim when Joanna Bailey moved on to another location. So I am recommending to you the appointment of Daniel Owens. And I'm going to look at Ann because you serve as the ex-officio, so I'm going to give you the opportunity to make the motion on this one.
I move for the appointment of Dan Owens as the permanent Director of Neil Public Library.
Move and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And thank you very much for that. With that, we now move to item number D, the Project Downtown Pullman Phase One Final Workshop. And with the introduction for that, Mike Urban, our City Administrator.
Thank you. Subbing in for Sean Coats, I really just want to introduce the team from Welch Comer. This is just another workshop for council, very similar to the ones that we've been through already. And with that, Phil.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for the opportunity to be here again tonight. My name is Phil Boyd. I'm with Welch Comer Engineers. Also in our team, I have Brian Scott and Jaclyn Robnett from BDS and Dell Hatch from BWA Architects. He's our landscape architect here to talk specifically about trees, because I know that's a discussion topic that has come up since the last workshop. So the presentation objective, this is a continuum of a big chunk of work the council started undertaking in about 2019 with a master plan that Brian led. I thought it would be useful for the council to kind of look at that continuum, actually before 2019, when it started with some community groups. So we can kind of see the whole spectrum and how we got to here. And then hopefully, if council's in the mind to do so, give us some council direction on whether or not to come back at a future council meeting with an engineering services contract on the priority projects that you have selected, if that's the council's wish tonight. The original objective was to move into construction in 2023. There's a little bit of a time crunch to make that happen, because there's lots of work that we need to get done between now and initiating construction in May of 2023. So that's the objective of tonight's meeting. The way we're going to do that is Brian's going to talk a little bit about the master plan actions, priorities and actions. Just a little bit of a review, because there's lots of stuff in there, and we're touching two or three elements of it. But there's four more that probably need to be touched. We'll talk about community engagement. Jaclyn Robnett is going to be pinching for Courtney Kramer, who's not able to be here tonight. And then I'll go through some of the Project One feasibility analysis that we did. That was in your council packet, because there was a lot of reading and a lot of details in there that hopefully council had opportunity to look at. Dell will have a little breakout specifically, so Dell can talk about the trees and the council can ask questions about that. Hopefully, we'll move into some council direction and discussion. And then at the end, I was hoping, I wanted Brian to talk a little bit about other opportunities for funding from the private side. This has been from the public side, and the city has indicated a pretty big commitment. As we have moved through the process, the property owners have said, some of the key property owners that were involved in the steering committee, we were talking to them about business improvement areas, local improvement districts, and they said, gosh, we might be interested in some of that. And so wanted to give Brian a little opportunity, because he's done a lot of them in Washington, and talk about those things with the council as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Brian.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Brian Scott with BDS Planning. My role tonight is just to remind you of what got us to this plan before we hear about the community input and the details on the recommendations. All of this grew out of many years of good work in community leadership in Pullman. The Pullman 2040 effort with a big vision for the community. Washington State University's Business and Landscape Architecture Schools did design scenarios for downtown in 2019. The Civic Trust has been doing work for many years and featured a major charrette in 2019. And then the master plan that we had the good fortune to lead, the community process on the master plan was completed in 2020. We're now on Project Downtown with the Phase One Infrastructure Feasibility Study, looking ahead to construction, hopefully next year. And then I just want to remind you that the Downtown Pullman Association is actively involved in the Washington Main Street Program in implementing the tried and true four-step approach to downtown revitalization, which I think is core to making all these physical improvements really a success in giving you the downtown that you want, so you have the vitality and the activation that goes with it. As mentioning the four-point approach of the Main Street Program of economic vitality, design, organization, and promotion to bring about community transformation. And that Downtown Pullman Association is well positioned to move forward in all of those things. Your support of them is critical, has been. Thank you for that. And continuing that along with the university and private actors, and I'll talk about that a little further, as Phil mentioned, later in the meeting. Just as a quick reminder, the master plan identified six high-priority key actions, enhancing the gems that are already in downtown Pullman, building people-centric in everything that you do. So this is about people more than roads and cars. Activating public space to make them well-used and exciting. Magnifying the core to grow at the edges. Encouraging entrepreneurship to make sure there's private investment. And catalyzing leadership to move things forward through the Downtown Association, the city, the university, and other actors. Each section of that master plan has a detailed description of what we were recommending in it. And then there's sections on how that concept is developed and then specific action steps. And that goes on for 100 or so pages to really detail these projects. The purpose of this project downtown now is to pick out which of these projects should be funded with the city's ARPA funding. So that's the grounding and the basis of engaging the community and you all and many of the downtown property and business owners in the last few months. And now Jaclyn Robnett's going to give you a rundown on what that community engagement was and what we learned from it.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and councilmembers. As Brian and Phil heat up, I'm going to briefly do an overview of the community engagement that was a cornerstone of this first phase of the downtown improvement project. Ultimately, as our team engaged with a variety of stakeholders, including a city-appointed steering committee, we hosted a really large event of property and business owners earlier in the spring and then presented an online platform that gave individuals the opportunity to learn about the project for downtown improvements and offer public comment. Ultimately, over 20,000 unique impressions were made via social media and online promotion. Over 5,000 unique visits were made to the website itself to review the storybook. And nearly 350 unique comments were made. Through that engagement, there were sort of five key buckets that are more detailed within the packet that you received in the slides you'll see. I won't read them all to you, but hopefully you all had a chance to review the storybook itself, as well as the public comments that were shared. The five themes that we'll be highlighting tonight are that the public overwhelmingly validated the concept of the master plan and the downtown improvements. There were frequent comments applicable to this project itself and widespread enthusiasm for the projects. Several projects that had to do with public right-of-way that are slightly beyond the scope of this specific set of recommendations, but wanted to highlight for council consideration as further improvements and projects are considered. There were frequent comments applicable to improvements on private property that will go hand-in-hand with public investments. And finally, frequent comments applicable to activating public and private property as part of making a vibrant and exciting downtown. Ultimately, you'll see time and time again that community understands that a pretty and functional infrastructure of a downtown is just one part of creating a vibrant and exciting place where people want to be and spend time in the truly special place that is downtown Pullman. So as mentioned, community comments overwhelmingly validated the concepts of the design. You'll see a variety of pull quotes here. But ultimately, the concept of a family-oriented pedestrian and visitor-friendly downtown was in demand from stakeholders across the board. Time and time again, we heard that people called for a people-centric down prioritizing time spent in a quality downtown over traffic moving through. Again, frequent comments applicable to the project. There was support for the concept of the project generally, prioritizing a beautiful, functional public realm for pedestrians and visitors. As I mentioned, several comments about the right-of-way and the fact that there are projects beyond the scope of these initial improvements, but emphasize the fact that further city action can emphasize and promote a vibrant downtown. Public investment in the infrastructure of downtown will also offer the opportunity for private property investment. This includes property owners having the opportunity to take advantage of construction downtown to do beautification and facade improvements and contribute to the creating of an active and pedestrian-friendly public realm. And finally, the investments paid by the city are, like I said, just a part of creating a vibrant downtown Pullman. And the implementation from the master plan will rely upon an active public and private sector. The overwhelming takeaway, I'll just hammer in one more time, from our community engagement, from the steering committee level to engaging with business and property owners, and ultimately from a variety, hundreds of members of the public, was that a public-private partnership to create a vibrant, people-centered downtown is the overwhelming call. And you'll hear more about the details from Dell and the rest of the team.
Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit about the Phase One Improvement Project feasibility. And you guys, again, have that in your packet. Before I get into that, I did want to introduce, there are steering committee members in the House. Mike Yates, Judy Cole, and Holly Greystone. I think that's the three that are here. These guys spent a lot of time, oh, sorry, John Jaheen's here. John snuck in. I didn't see him, John. And they spent a lot of time listening to the different scenarios and options. There's also council members here, sorry that were part of the steering committee. I should acknowledge that as well. That you guys sat and listened to a lot of the details and different scenarios, weighed the public feedback that we received, and gave us guidance as we moved through iterations that eventually came to council here, and you all also gave us feedback. I wanted to show you, you guys are probably tired of seeing the slide, but we're close. We're near the end here, and so this is an exciting time for all of us that have been putting hours and certainly for the steering committee members that were involved. The big theme, as Jaclyn hit, was right-sizing the downtown, making it people-centric, not just making the car the primary mode of transportation in downtown. Those are the projects that we have presented to you before. And the key decision point tonight is which is the priority is council, if you choose to do so, going to direct to move forward and prioritizes one, two, and three. The big feature of Main Street was widening the sidewalks, narrowing the lane widths, bulping out the intersections, and just making the space in the sidewalk realm more usable for the pedestrian, including bikers. That's a pretty unique feature to have a bike lane, which I mentioned to council before, is part of WashDOT's requirement now on Main Street. It is also a state highway, is that we provide for a bike lane in there. This is one of the things that the steering committee went round and round and exactly, you know, how wide should the sidewalks be? What are the trade-offs? What do we do with parking? Is it parallel? Is it diagonal? This is ultimately what their recommendation was to council. The people-centered, walkable sidewalk area, again, with multiple features that just bring the scale down. The lights aren't so big. The trees can be changed a little bit to be lower, not necessarily all of them. And we'll get into that in the detail here in a little bit with Dell. This is the speed table that we've shown several times at Pine Street Plaza. The other key thing we heard from the property owners and business owners was slowing traffic. We aren't at the point where truck traffic can be removed, slowing traffic in general, so it doesn't feel like a racetrack through. There was a key design element. This is one of the features that does that, because it creates friction, because you have a little raised intersection in there. It gives you opportunity to create more pedestrian-centric space using a hawk, which is a signal that is pedestrian-triggered. And then that's just another rendering of it. The section between Main, between Kamiakon and Grand, as we've talked about before, it needs to remain three lanes. But we still eked out some sidewalk width by narrowing the lane width up. Narrowing the lane width also creates friction and slows the traffic down. And then this is the bike lane configuration I mentioned earlier. This is the one that we still need to address at some point, is ultimately what will the policy be on Grand Avenue? At some point, traffic volumes will dictate a five-lane section through there, four through two lanes northbound, two-lane southbound, and a turn lane. When do we implement that? Is it during the project? Do you wait later on as the traffic volumes push you into it? And there's lots of psychology and doesn't necessarily need to be decided about tonight, but I want to make sure it's still on the council's radar screen that at some point we'll need to deal with that. Design direction we heard from council, I'm just summarizing here briefly from the last meeting, what we heard. And I want to validate, because as we move forward, you know, these become part of the design criteria. Lowering speeds on Main Street and Grand Avenue, we heard that loud and clear. And using all the features that are available to us in good design to accomplish that. Prioritize ADA parking. I'll show you some images about that in the parallel configuration, because that was a topic we heard at the last council meeting. And so I want to bring that back and give council opportunity to talk about that. Main and Grand intersection, pedestrian safety is a priority. Treating stormwater before we discharge it to the river. Walkability and wayfinding is key, and then continuing the strong communications plan. Megan Guido, Councilmember Guido, had emphasized that point. And we intend to use some good graphics to continue forward and communicate the design ideas. This is the image that shows what parallel accessible parking can look like. And there is not a requirement for ADA parking in the public realm in parallel parking. There's a document called the PROWAG, which I can't remember what the acronym stands for. But it's a guidance document we use when we're designing streets for accessibility in the public realm. They're not required. If you do choose to implement them, they might look like this configuration here, where you can see that there's a depression in the sidewalk here. There's a little curb here in order to create accessibility. The challenge in urban core is you have a building threshold that can't move, and you have a street grade that's pretty hard to move as well because of existing drainage and whatnot. So these can be a challenge to design, but they are feasible. And so I thought I would throw in just a couple pictures to show those. And this is an example in Plan View what they might look like. You can see there's a refuge in this upper area here. So if you're coming out of the vehicle, that gives you the accessibility to get in. So I'll pause there, Mr. Mayor, if there's questions. I know Councilmember Weller had comments about that, and I wanted to make sure I give an opportunity to receive information.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you for addressing these. I know I never like to surprise, of course, presenter, especially how much information you've gathered and the great work you've done. As you know, ADA is extremely important. I did notice that it's not along Main Street. I did look down into your additional notes to know, to see where they are. But I know it's further away from many businesses such as Rico's and businesses along that main area, Main Core. The other question I did have was, you had discussed the importance of treating stormwater. But there was another thing that I had brought up last time, which was bringing more notice to our waterways. And you had seemed enthusiastic about it. So I just wanted to make sure that we did make note of that, because that's a particular feature of Pullman that we often miss. So.
Absolutely. And I think we, at the last council meeting, we talked about that, that we couldn't help ourselves but turn to the waterways a little bit. One of the things that, since the council meeting, actually Dell Hatch and I were talking about that. I'm going to, I apologize, but I'm going to go back and get to Pine Street Plaza here. You all remember that Pine Street Plaza was the number three priority in the iteration. It was, one was Main Street, or the feedback we received from the steering committee and the community, one was Main Street, two was Grand Avenue, three was Pine Street Plaza. We had put a placeholder in there, a budget placeholder, because to really figure out what's appropriate in Pine Street Plaza, you need to spend a lot of design-level effort to do that. Dell and I couldn't help ourselves the other day when we were talking about this and wondering about the opportunity to start the reach-out to the waterway space right on the edge of the bridge and each side. If we're going to budget some improvement in Pine Street, is that where we start, thinking ahead of some of the imagery we saw in there? So that's, we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, because again, that's design-level detail. But the purpose of your comments is to do just what they're doing, is to stimulate us on what's a priority to council and the community, so we can carry that forward into the design. Same thing with the ADA spaces, sorry, is that we haven't landed those yet. Exactly when we get into design, we'll be landing those in a hard and fast way and working through that with Sean and his team.
I appreciate you going above and beyond like this, so.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Phil, on Nathan's point, the ADA parking on Main, as you have showed some examples of, I think is really important. I seem to recall this coming up at the steering committee. And the other thing that came up, steering committee, was, and again, this adds to your challenge, was to look at those suggested equations as to how many ADA spaces per how many spaces. And I know you guys ran that equation with just the downtown, with just Main and that small section of Grand. But it was brought up, and I think Judy brought it up, at the steering committee meeting, that maybe we should look at that in the total number of spaces within the downtown core to give us a better, realistic number. And again, it all relates back to money. But yeah, to sort of balance that, I realize it's not a hard-fest equation. I have looked at the document in length, as you know I have. And so that might be helpful as we go forward, as we get more granular on this. But that one, that one place on Main Street there that we want that, want that parking for the ADA accessibility is really, really important.
Yep. And we've heard that loud and clear. As I mentioned earlier, it will be a challenge to accomplish that from a geometric and a grading standpoint. And it could be, gosh, we'd really love it right here. If we tear this building down, we could make it work, but we probably won't be able to tear the building down, so we might have to move the spot. But we've heard it loud and clear and anticipate as we move forward, working through those with Sean and his team.
Francis?
Can you go back up to the speed table? There's a couple slides up. I had a question related to the speed table, and if the purpose of the speed table is to slow the traffic to slow the traffic down, does the speed table slow the traffic down at the table? Or does it slow it down before the table? Because if it slows it down at the table, I think the speed table's in the wrong location, because that's where we want to have our quietest with Pine Street. And I'm wondering if the speed table, if it's, if people don't slow down till they hit the table, should we actually, should the table be pushed back to where Paradise connects into Main Street? And I'm interested in your thoughts on that.
It's an interesting thought, and the speed table is performing two functions here. One is it's, it is, you're correct, as people approach it, they're going to say, why is this hill? And they're, they'll start to slow down slightly before it, but it's not the only device in the corridor prior to this. There's other elements that will be in there, the bulbouts, we'll push trees out into the bulbouts, Dell will talk about that in a second, which add friction. Maybe we do a speed feedback sign, as we talked about, further past Spring, up just as you come across the bridge there. So there'll be multiple devices to try to slow people. You're correct, it will be after this, but this also adds a lot of recognition of Pine Street, and it helps us pull Pine Street a little bit out into it. So it's not just doing a speed function, it's also an aesthetic element. It's a primary pedestrian corridor, so we're really promoting the pedestrian, because you're at grade. If you were in a wheelchair, you're just going straight across, and you don't have to go down a ramp to get into it. So there's some other elements of the speed table, which is why we thought about putting it here.
Okay, because I would agree that the element there for the speed table is for pedestrian access not to slow down, because if we're slowing down there, that's, with the brakes being applied, it's just going to make it a noisier intersection. It'll actually increase the noise rather than necessarily decrease the noise.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll have enough other elements prior to this that will start to cue people to slow down. It should happen, actually, prior to Paradise. We've looked a little bit of a, and this is, again, we're getting too far ahead of ourselves because it's design-level detail, but we've started talking a little bit with Sean about the alignment of the roadway, and maybe there's a little bit of a chicane in it as you come by the armory to make it a little, not such a straight, kind of nice, speedy shot through there. But that's getting way into the geometry that's too much for at this point.
Yeah, I was looking at the videos of the ones that I'm aware of in the neighborhoods that I grew up in, and they are signed. They're clearly signed that say raised sidewalk ahead, or raised section ahead, or raised crosswalk ahead. They're clearly signed well ahead of when you actually get there. That seems to be standard.
Yep, yes. Okay, we'll keep moving on here. Becky?
Oh, sorry. Taking the picture. And this might be a little too granular right now, too, but I just wanted to make sure that all of this, I did read the entire packet, the 14 pages there, but this still includes the traffic lights talking to each other down through Main. And this is the part that might be a little too granular, is on that intersection from Main and Grand, if we could have a left-turn signal when you're coming up Main onto Grand, I just want to put that out there. I would really love that. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Right, when you're, when you're, yes, when you're turning southbound.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, instead of just having the left-hand turn, have the right-away there.
Yes, yes. And the signals do get, we'll say redecorated, and they do get integrated, so they're talking to each other. They also have a little better pedestrian function than they currently have to interrupt the cycle. Bike lane, at this. So I think I've hit these trees. So I'll have Dell Hatch come up. Between last council meeting and this council meeting, I think I misspoke at the prior council meeting when I talked about moving the trees, and I think it was taken literally that we were going to take the trees and move them. I apologize for misspeaking. I meant move the location of the trees. Downtown and street trees, and having mature trees like you have now, and potentially going to a smaller, newer tree, always a challenging topic. We have been putting a lot of thought into it. That question kind of accelerated our thinking a little bit, and Dell will dig into it here and be able to answer your questions about it. It, there it is, it's right here. So they can see it on, right there, yeah. Okay. This slide that you're looking at here is essentially a redeveloped version of the one that Phil showed you just prior, where we're looking at the proposal of widening the sidewalk in conjunction with some of the narrowing of the lanes. If you look at the way I've illustrated it, let's see if I can move my, here we go. That element right there is representative of one of the many canopies that exist in the downtown. And as you folks know, there's quite a few of your trees that are, where they're planted and where those canopies extend to, they're very, very close. Now that they've grown to a certain size, some of the canopies have been lifted above those, the canopy of the tree has been lifted above the awnings on the building. So it isn't as evident of some of the conflict there, but some of those canopies are getting so large now that some of your nicer buildings in the downtown are somewhat hidden by those tree canopies. So some of the things I want to talk to you about tonight are what we're trying to achieve, are wider sidewalks for more activity, opportunities for seating and dining, simply movement of people, multiple people on those sidewalks. Right now, you have in this dimension that I'm showing about there, you have about nine feet of sidewalk that you need, that you can use now for people moving, for putting any kind of furniture out there, and then you're at those existing tree grades. Phil talked about the ADA issues. We want to make sure that these sidewalks have plenty of width, so movement of folks who may be disabled or need to use a wheelchair, that can exist freely as well. Another reason that we're trying to widen some of these, all of your sidewalks on Main Street. One of the things that we've talked about between Phil and I also is that maybe introducing some diversity of trees into your downtown would be an option to consider. It's always going to be a challenge when you have canopies of trees that have reached the age that they are in Pullman right now. Cannot replace that. You have that many years of growth getting those trees up, but some of the trees, we feel, may have an option to be moved. And when Phil said, we're looking at some of those bulbouts to create more space, we think those are great opportunities to replace some of the trees that are close to the buildings, move them a little bit further out. Aesthetically, we like the idea that all of your trees, that your trees might have now some vertical change as it moves down Main Street as well. If we're able to move them out onto the bulbs, you now get some alignment change on Main Street as well. So as we're thinking about the trees, where we might move some of them, we're looking at that as an aesthetic and how it contributes to the entire streetscape character. One of the big things that we're doing now in the last few years on streetscape projects is actively increasing the root zone area of street trees when we plant them. You have some very small openings for your trees now. It's all hardscape pavement, either concrete or asphalt. I'm still not sure if you have an active irrigation system that is working for those trees, but the trees need two things that are very important for their longevity and their health, water and air. And when they can't get the air because everything's hardscape above them, it will always be detrimental to the tree. So those are things that we're looking at as well. If I can just move this down, if you see this gray area right here, this is showing an option for a tree replacement. The red one would be an existing tree, that because of its proximity to an awning, proximity to maybe ultimately a handicap stall, that we might look to move or replace. If we do that, we want to increase all of the area below that new tree with a broader root zone, doing that potentially by bridging that gray section of concrete that I show there, so there's no hard compaction immediately above the tree. I'll show you an example here in a minute of how we've accomplished that. So those are some of the things we're trying to do. The other thing you'll notice in this slide is that we've suggested that there might be opportunities to increase the landscaping and the greenery within the downtown, and by placing plants at the base of some of these trees, now that they have a broader, wider area for their base, there are still options for using planters, we believe. Those planters help also create some barriers to the edge of the street, but some of the natural landscaping, we think, could enhance the downtown. Here's photographs of the downtown. You can see the proximity of some of the trees to the awnings and the overhangs. You can see how high those canopies are. For instance, the building on the right-hand side, very attractive building, when this, when those trees are leafed out, it's hard to see that building. So this is near Pine Street. We'll have opportunities for bulbs to come out, have opportunities to add some trees a little further away from the building. These are some of the detailed photographs showing those very tight areas where those trees are planted now, and as I was mentioning about, essentially nothing but hardscape around that tree. You also see that, and this happens very often in street designs, that those trees are all exactly in alignment, and also in alignment with those are some of the street signs, some of the lights and everything else, and it just creates sort of this visual line. That's why we think maybe moving some of them out a little further, now you get a little bit more of a movement along the sidewalk like that, and also creates a little bit more space. Some of these trees have reached some pretty good caliper size. You'll see this red car right next to that tree, it's started to lift the curbs, et cetera, and that's part of what it's doing, is trying to get more air and get more water, so those trees' roots are coming to the surface. It also makes it challenging, one of the things we'd like to do is if we can correspond the parking stalls, like the nose and the tail end of a car, to a location of a tree, somebody getting out of that red car very well might open the door and bang it into the tree. So most of you, if not all of you, have seen some of these images. They're ones that we shared with the public during our public meetings. They're sketches that I did over the top of photographs of the street. Now I color-coded them in hopes of explaining my thoughts to you on this. So the red trees that you see are the trees that exist today. They're much larger, they're very close to the buildings, et cetera. You can see that we've, this is one of the edges near the Pine Street Plaza, looking to the south. You can see where we've suggested the bulbs come out further, and the trees that are in the light green would be new-planted trees, replacing the two red ones. You can see that we're also putting them on, or wrapping them around the corner where there are no trees today. So we're getting more trees in that area. Those trees also might be some that we look at to introduce a diversity of a species. Rather than having all of one species on Main Street, in special places like the Pine Street Plaza, we introduce maybe a slightly smaller tree. Maybe it's a tree that has a really wonderful bloom in the spring, and it gets some really varied color in the fall. So add some interest, add some different scale to the space, and add to the whole ambiance of what that intersection might be. In the distance, the darker green trees would be representative of existing trees that we would look to retain on Main Street. There's three of these images, I believe. This is looking back the other way. So the green ones that are fairly bright would be new ones. The red ones would be ones that we would look to remove, so now we're pushing the trees a little further out. And Mr. Benjamin, this contributes to what you're asking, Phil. All of these different elements create this visual friction that slow people down. And then the dark greens, green ones again, would be trees we would consider saving. Here's one of the, what I think is a very attractive building in your downtown. The red trees, again, are existing trees. Canopies are getting almost as tall as that building. We have opportunities, again, to bulb out here, add smaller trees a little further out, and again, other greenery in the downtown. So we're looking to strike a balance of what trees do we feel are very critical to try and maintain in the downtown, which ones may have opportunities to relocate a new tree, and maybe it's a different type of tree. This is the one that Phil just showed you. I've changed the color slightly on this to show that the trees that have a little bit of that maroon color would be the newer, smaller trees pushed further away from the buildings, creating that friction, contributing to the whole idea of this plaza expanding into the street. And you can see that at the base of these trees, too, I'm suggesting that we might also be, have that opportunity now to add more landscape greenery within the downtown. All, it would be irrigated, because we have irrigation to the trees. We would look to work with your Parks Department and select plantings that would be very low maintenance, so that we're not looking at having these big pruning operations. They might be ornamental grasses, things like that, that are very easy to take care of, you essentially tackle them once a year. Can I answer any questions? Okay.
Thank you for that visual, it really helps. For the, if, for the trees that may be removed, are they able to be relocated on other city properties, such as in our parks? Or are they too, too mature for that?
In my first opinion, I would say that those, it would be very challenging to move those trees with a great deal of success for survival. They're very large. The simple construction work and activity that's going to be happening all around them, just to get to the tree where you could dig around its drip line, get a root ball out that's large enough to salvage that tree, box it up, move it, replant it, a real challenge.
Thank you.
Megan?
So I appreciate the effort to look at more of this phased approach. I guess I'm just thinking about the practicality of it. I mean, I think, obviously, it would be nice to keep some of these trees, but my concern is that the sidewalks right now, with trees trying to get air and water, right? So you're going to keep some of those, but we're still going to have, we're still going to dig up the sidewalks, and we're going to put new sidewalks down. So my worry is, are they going to continue to lift the sidewalk? And are we going to continue to have the same safety issues, which is, it's getting pretty bad down there in terms of the sidewalks? And businesses have been very clear with us that, you know, this is a safety concern. We've had a couple of falls. So maybe you can talk to me a little bit again about how you mitigate that.
In this image, I talked a little bit about that tree and how we could bridge the sidewalk and expand its root zone to kind of keep those roots low, have irrigation to them, still get air to them.
Okay.
So it'd be, actually be room below that gray section of concrete where the air can get to it, and there's no compaction of that soil above those roots. The idea of maintaining that tree would be to also increase the area around the base of that tree, have opportunity, again, for more air, more irrigation directly to it, more plantings, and even to the point of that panel possibly being bridged. Now, some of those roots, as you mentioned, are quite high, and we saw in that image that some of the curbs have been lifted and the sidewalks are starting to move. Some of those, some of those may have to be cut, some of those main roots. That's never good for a tree, to lose one of those big roots like that, which is why it's such a challenge in a situation like this, when you're reworking from building facade to building facade, and you're working around it. It can also be a challenge during the construction period, because we don't want the contractor driving his equipment right over the top of those roots as well. driving his equipment right over the top of those roots as well. We don't want him backing into them and damaging them, things like that. So, a lot of protection has to be provided for all those trees that we would want to Everything in regard to keeping your trees, or some of your trees as they exist today, will be challenges.
Yeah. I guess that's my concern, is the practicality of it, and, I mean, I'm-
It can be done.
Okay.
It can be done. It will be, but I say, it will, there will be challenges both in terms of implementation and potential cost.
And cost.
Francis?
And my question is a follow-up, similar to Councilmember Guido. If we're looking at the existing trees that we want to retain, I know you have a height issue related to the road, you have a height issue related to the sidewalk, and then you have, for the building entrance, you can't go above a certain point, otherwise you create an ADA issue-
Correct.
-into the building. But if we have existing trees, we might have to raise the sidewalks in those areas, which means our sidewalks could have, rather than being flat the whole way, there could be some elevation changes. Is, and this may not be a question to you, but it may be over here. How does that look? How does that work? How does that function if we're trying to retain? I know we also have, if you're within the tree, trying to expand the amount of airspace for the roots, that impacts into how much space we have for ADA. And I know there's, and I don't expect that we'll hit that four-foot issue as it relates to the requirements for ADA, or the five feet within 200, 200 feet. But I just want to make sure that, and I'm confident that you've thought through it and have, and have an answer. I just, whether or not you have an answer, if you can be a short answer related to this.
Well, the short answer is that we want all of your sidewalks to meet ADA accessibility, so that would require no more than a 2% cross slope from building face to the curb. So, can't be more than 2% in the cross angle of people in the direction they're walking. When you're working with existing trees and you want to save them, and you have those sidewalk issues, there are solutions to where this tree might end up with a low wall around that tree. So if the tree were low, for instance, you might have a wall that would allow the sidewalk to come up. And if, if the tree were low, we might have a sidewalk, or a retaining wall, essentially creating a small well there. But there would be enough of a barrier there. We don't want to create another hazard for people to go into. But there are ways to do that. Again, as I mentioned before, it complicates a lot of, a lot of the issues.
Becky, and then Eileen.
I just want to be really clear. So you are saying that we can retain some of the trees downtown, and that the ones that you're suggesting we don't retain are because of things like ADA, that we want to actually move them out on the bulbs and those kinds of things? So we can retain those trees because we're not actually moving them? Is that-
Yeah. The idea would be that we're not moving one of your existing trees from here to there. We're not going to be able to achieve that by simply moving it, digging a new hole and putting it in. When we reference moving, we should be saying replacing those trees in new locations. One of the things that we haven't worked through in full detail, but one of the things that Phil and I have talked about, is an opportunity to maybe phase the replacement of all of your trees. So, for instance, we come into your downtown, we do a photographic study of both sides of the street, and how the trees relate to the building facades. We look at it in plan view and how they relate to parking stalls. And we look at how some of those trees might be replaced in different locations. In doing that, let's say we took it, just for instance, in a three-phased approach. Maybe a third of the existing trees get moved out further to the location within that last four feet of a now wider sidewalk. But we allow for, in seven to eight years, another tree down the line to also be moved out. So you get that seven or eight years with the growth on the trees that we have now replaced, and then we go to another phase, put in new trees, take this one out. We've talked about that. We don't have it all the way figured out, but we think that might be an option as well. So over a period of 20 years, you've replaced all of the trees in the downtown. They're now out near the curb. You now have the full width of 12-plus feet from building face to any obstacles. So that's also an option that we're trying to look at. Again, sort of design-level detail, and it'd be a detail that we would probably bring back to you folks, and a little more detail and explain it to you.
Eileen?
Yeah, it's been a couple of years, pre-COVID, that Ann and Pat and I, I think, were to a breakout session from some folks that had similar challenges and raised pavements and all like such. So, they had some great solutions. So in my usually wonky self, I looked up some of the technology that went on with this. And you used the term bridging, I think they used the term suspended. If we had the money, I'd go with all suspended sidewalks. I'd go with a whole suspended street, but, but suspended sidewalks. So we're talking about areas of suspended sidewalks, which gives us that airspace for the, for the trees, for water. I mean, you could even sneak some utilities in there if you, if you really wanted to. And the Buffalo leveling, or the Bison leveling systems, that are simple, low-tech, anybody can use them, and as the trees move, as the grounds move, you just get in there with an Allen wrench and you tweak them a little bit. Those Bison levelers are cheap, and we could have hundreds of them pushing those, you know, pushing the boundaries of where we need to be in terms of safety and ADA accessibility. But the suspended sidewalk thing solves a lot of these problems. Technology is there, it's inexpensive, and, and it would look really cool, because some of the design features on those surfacing materials are, are very clever.
Yes, it's, it's been the common element in the last four downtown projects that we've worked on, is to take that approach with both new and some existing trees.
Nathan?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I appreciate what Becky had said by clarifying exactly the points, because trees do get very emotional, and those have been around longer than some of us have been around. So, my question is, if it's just the canopies we're dealing with, is it able to, we're able to lower the canopies? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't hear that.
The canopies of the trees.
A canopy of the awnings? Or the-
Of the trees, the canopy level. Yeah. Can, is that possible?
Of the existing?
Of the existing trees.
Raising them all up?
Yeah, yeah. Lower, sorry, yes. Yeah, go ahead.
Most of, I drove through your Main Street two or three times this evening before the meeting. A good many of those trees now have been pruned to the point where they are above the awnings.
Okay.
Or most of the awnings. The branching and the shade value of them now is getting higher and higher. Ideally, you would have awning, excuse me, canopy height of a tree in about that eight or nine-feet level. Some of yours now, I know, have been pruned up, I'm going to guess 12, 14 feet up. So, it's not so much that the tree canopy is now conflicting with those awnings, but as those trees continue to grow and get larger, some of those trees are now probably 10 inches plus in their diameter. Eventually, some of those are going to conflict with the awnings as they get larger.
All right.
So it's either, do you ask the business owner to remove the awning? Or do we look now at maybe shifting a new tree further out?
Okay. The other question is, the trees that you are proposing to, I mean, it's removing, it's not moving, it's removing.
Correct.
You can take clippings of those trees, and with proper care, replant those clippings, correct?
I think that, that might be a chore as well.
Mm-hmm.
But potentially it could be done.
It can be done. Okay. Yeah. It's an emotional topic.
Yes, I, I know. I know it is.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Dell, for your information. It's provided me with some relief that we're not talking about, as people were fearing, totally eliminating the trees. I mean, this was the, I think, the vision that, that, that people had. I like the phased approach. I think we need to look at the health of the trees. I mean, that's, you know, important. Because of their lack of air, lack of water, are they kind of dying a, a slow death in some cases? And so I think we need to be very cognizant of that, as well as, I mean, the health of the existing trees, as well as what we're going to do with new ones. But I think it's very important to our citizens, the people that let us know loudly and clearly that they are not in favor of losing the character of the trees downtown, and that we are not considering doing that. So I am very grateful for your explanation on that. So, thank you very much, and thank you for the work that you've done on, on making this somewhat more visual for us. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any else? Okay. Trees are three-dimensional chess, aren't they? Because there's so many elements that go into it. It becomes a significant design effort just in itself. Next thing I want to move into is, is talking about the improvement project feasibility and then council direction. This is in your packet, and this is kind of, and I apologize for the nerd character of it, but it was, what Sean and I had wrote the scope of workaround, is really looking at some feasibility elements. Some of them were qualitative, community benefit, some of them were quantitative, traffic flow, geometric fit, which, those are things that are important to us. I attempted to just summarize it. As Sean and I worked through the best way to present this to council, we landed on this format. Hopefully it was helpful to council. We were trying to jam a lot of information in there in order to show how it ranked with both the community and the steering committee, and then talking about some of the elements we looked at as far as feasibility, qualitative and quantitative. I tossed this up here just in order to refresh the council's memory about the community's prioritization of it, because this is leading up to asking the question of council, where do you, where do you want to head if you're, if you're in the mode of that, doing that tonight? Main, Grand, Pine Street Plaza? And then this is an image, this was in one of the memos that was in your packet, that we did with Jaclyn Rand in one of our steering committee meetings with the group. And I thought that this might be a useful time. I talked to Mike Urban about this, and Sean, if the steering committee members that are here might come up and offer a few of their observations on this process. So, I'll invite either Mike, or Judy, or John up, who want to provide some commentary to council on, and on what they were thinking as they went through this prioritization project.
Thanks. Hi, everybody. My name's Mike Yates. I've met most of you. Some of you have been around longer than others. I, by the way, I'm going to leave my hat on. It's kind of windy in here, so my hair would get messed up a little bit, so I'm just going to keep it on there. So I was invited to be on the steering committee by Sean Coats, who's not here tonight. It's my understanding that he wanted people that had developed downtown, that had had businesses downtown, that had been in the community for a while. I mean, just, if you don't, if I don't know you, some of you I don't know, some I do. My wife is born and raised here, effectively. She's like third-generation Pullman. And I'm a transplant. We got married, and she convinced me, actually not very difficultly convinced me, to move over in 1997. So we've lived here for quite a long time now. And in 1998, we started a pumpkin and flower farm out on Prune Orchard Road that was really the beginnings of an entrepreneurial and old-building restoration effort. We, and I'm going to tell you this, because if, if someone doesn't know this, it's important for them to know that there's people like myself, not just me, and my wife, and my business partner, DJ Swindell, and his wife, and our other partners that we brought on, but there's people that have lived here a long time and are serious about making good things happen in Pullman. And this project right here is the most significant project that I've seen in the 35-ish years that I've been around Pullman. And I say 35, because I was coming over here well before we moved here. And it not only will validate all the efforts that business owners and developers, and developer is a difficult word for me to say, because I'm, you know, literally putting my hand to a hammer myself many times. It'll validate what we've done up until this point, even though there wasn't a lot of improvements going on downtown, aside from state highway roads and asphalt that may actually go up within two inches of our sidewalks. And there's stuff that has gone on in our downtown and around downtown that, since 2005, when we decided to buy the old Combine Mall building to put Prune Orchard Retail in there, which was my wife's continuation of the farm, we redeveloped that building and turned it into a three-tenant building, essentially an upstairs tenant, which was office, Digilent was up there initially, Prune Orchard, Details for Living was downstairs, and we had a restaurant on the other side of it. Eventually, we got Black Cypress to go in there. I personally developed that space. I personally built the space. And we went on to redevelop the old Brown and Holter building, which was a car dealership up until the time Chevrolet moved out to where they're at right now, which was 1985. The previous owner of the building had redeveloped it. Schollhauser had done a nice job, and then he moved on and passed it along to me. We put loft apartments in it. You know, everybody said, "No, that'll never work. You can never do that. Too expensive." They're always leased. Always. We have, we have nearly 50,000 square feet of space in the downtown area. That includes retail, office, and residential space. If you include some of our properties that are outside of the true C2 district, we have a lot more than that. We own over, probably an over an acre of land of different lots around the downtown area. We're, we're not going anywhere. We're pretty serious about doing stuff downtown. And this project just excites me, because, first of all, we've got a really solid consulting group here. I, I don't know how well you guys have gotten to know them. I'm assuming you know them well. But they have done this. They're very thoughtful. They want this to succeed in Pullman. They're not just coming in and taking money from the city, and here's a plan, and we're going to go on our way. I'm Brian Scott with BDS. He called me a long time ago when that whole planning thing was going on, the Vision 2040 or whatever it was. We spoke on the phone several times for probably, he probably didn't want to do this, but if you know me, I like to voice my opinion, if you're going to ask me. I'm not going to come to a steering committee or to this type of a meeting and just hold back and be, you know, pussyfoot around with everybody. I'm not that way. If you're going to ask me to do something, I'm going to be all in. I'll do it. I'm not going to come to a meeting unprepared. I'm not going to not read the stuff. I'm not going to show up. You guys have full-time jobs. I live this. I live it. I've snowplowed just about every street downtown on a four-wheeler, personally. We have someone else that helps with that now. I've personally trimmed trees around the building, because they've been scraping against the stained glass windows on the old Bell Tower building, which is one of our properties. I've had to try to save trees at Foundry and Bell Tower when we put the new patio in the back. I own about 10 acres of land outside of town. We are gardeners. I, when I say gardeners, on steroids. I have thousands of plants, trees. Trees should not be the discussion here. And if there's constituents and people in the community watching this right now, they got to remember, those trees were planted through a Main Street program by a previous mayor. They were, they were also replacing other trees. And when you only have so much space, you can only do so much. If you're, if you're in a downtown environment where you have limited parking, limited sidewalks, limited roads, and you have fixed buildings in place, you have to bite the bullet and say, "We're going to pull trees out of the ground and- say, we're going to pull trees out of the ground and put new ones in. We're not getting rid of trees. We're properly managing trees and putting new ones in so that we can actually get them growing to the right level. Those trees that we have downtown, the Bell Tower building is the worst area. Just look at Bell Tower. Those trees are taller than Bell Tower and Bell Tower is not a short building. So I, I hope to God that this is not a discussion of trees. I am a tree lover. I literally own all the tools to prune trees. I literally do that on my own property. And I know it's painful. I had a Hawthorne tree that just went down the, you know, this last, when we had the heavy rains and the leaves were on. It kills me to get rid of trees. But when it gets down to it, what we need is a vibrant downtown. You've got people like myself and other people that are in the room, as well as other people that have developed downtown. And when I say developed, these are people that have bought buildings and cleaned them up, put their own business in them, like we did. We own Foundry. We developed Roost Coffee and Market. We put, you know, heck, we had a gallery downtown, Pullman Gallery and Studios. We have our own property management company downtown. We have our company offices downtown. We had an event venue downtown. We've done concerts. We've done just about everything someone could do. I'm not a doctor. I'm not an eye doctor. I can't do medical things, but we've tried just about anything. And the one thing that the businesses struggle with is succeeding. And you know what businesses need to succeed? Customers. And if you don't have a cool downtown, you're not going to have customers. So whoever it is that's telling you they're worried about the trees, and I hate to have to even talk about this because it's so obvious, it is going to be beautiful when these guys get done. I mean, Phil Boyd and Welsh Comer, they, I, they've spent hours on the phone with me because I'm just not satisfied with certain things, you know? If someone says no to something, I'm like, well, why not? You know? So I get the whole concept about being concerned about the trees, but, so I think it's important to say, hey, if we can keep some trees, that's great. But the bottom line is, is that those trees are undermining our sidewalks. They're actually affecting our businesses. You can't see low signage. So if I have a new tenant go into the Market Square building, which is on Main and Grand, corner of Main and Grand, by the way, I think the idea of having a permanent turn signal there so that, and then, because that's a problem, right? I've parked there a lot over the last many, many years. But we have tenants that, there's no trees around Market Square because we, it was a car dealership and there was never any trees put around there. And I think at some point the trees must have been removed along the main street uphillside. But we've got a ton of area there. We'd love to have more trees down there. There's lots of spots to actually add trees. So what I'm saying is that we may have a net increase in trees and these guys are trying to be soft and sensitive about all this because they're, they're being paid for by you. I'm not, but I can tell you that we have employees that rely on our business climate downtown. And I, I would be ashamed if any one of you voted against moving this forward. We've got money. We've got the right people in the city. As I said, probably 17 years ago, I'll say it again, and that was the first time I met Glenn Johnson face to face in the same meeting. I think Pat Wright was probably here. Francis may have been here at that time. I can't remember if you were on city council once before, but I keep thinking you were. We have a fantastic thing going on in Pullman. When I moved here, my mother-in-law, who was a lifetime resident, said, you can't develop in Pullman. They, you know, they won't let you do this and they won't let you do that. I started doing something. I said, Mary Lou, what the, God rest her soul, she died recently unfortunately, what are you talking about? I called up Greg Kolvig. He helped me with our first project on the Combine Mall building. We literally redeveloped that ourselves with, because we're the owners and we had contractors in there as well, but we did a lot of the labor. And Greg Kolvig held my hand. He gave me advice. He actually said, hey, you know what? If you look at this, you can do this. This is the kind of city we have. And, you know, four, five, six projects later and many new tenants, you know, we've been involved in, I bet you our tenant mix, probably we've gone through about 50 businesses over the last 17 years. So my question to you is, do you want to fast forward this and see someone like me coming to you and saying, we've gone through 50 businesses and we only have 10 retail spaces? Or do you want someone like me to come to you and say, listen, I have 10 retail spaces or more, I'm just using a number, and we've actually retained 25 or 30 of those businesses that we had? And, and we've actually done a pretty good job of it. I mean, Flirt just recently went out after 12 years. We've got a new, a tenant that's been in Rockstar and the Monroe and the new tenant that's going into the old Flirt space, which is the same person that owned Monroe, is, she's been with us as an employee and then an owner of that business for, I think, 17 years or something, 15 years. So we've got to retain people and that's your job also. And it's not just putting sewers in the ground. It's not, it literally is the beautification. And when I first came to the first meeting that I came to before 17 years ago, I gave grief to the city council because they were complaining about what businesses were doing for their own property. I said, well, yeah, there's a fence out here. Isn't that your fence? There's been a hole in it for three years. Why don't you fix the fence? We need to take care of our own backyard and your backyard is to help us as entrepreneurs so the community has a cool place to go spend time, their friends, their family, all the things that they talked about. And I'm not even going to go to any of that, but I just wanted to say from a heartfelt standpoint, there are many, many, many entrepreneurs right now in Pullman. There's people, young people that I'm like, gosh, this is great. You know, and I was always the young guy. Now I'm older, you know, and that happens. And we need to keep a new, fresh blood going on here. And it's, it's your job, our job as a community to open the welcome mat up to Pullman that says, hey, we're open for business. We want shoppers. We want people living here. We want you to come and have a good time. And this is the way we do it. Worrying about the minutia of a project like this is really for another meeting. It needs to, it really needs to be, are we doing it or are we not doing it? And I think if we don't do it, you're going to start seeing people that say, you know what? Maybe I won't do that next project because this is an opportunity now. And if anyone's watching this on, whatever they watch it on YouTube or whatever, this is the one opportunity now that could be that big turning point for Pullman. Just like people used to say, when the bypass didn't happen in Pullman and, and certain stores went, didn't go into Pullman 30, 40 years ago, whenever it was, and the Moscow Mall ended up turning into the big deal. And they were like, dang, we didn't take advantage of that back when we had the opportunity. This is our opportunity. Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you, Mike. Phil, you had somebody else who had... Looks like Judy's getting ready to come forward here.
She is. I, I had, I had admonished Mike. Mike Urban said, keep it brief, Mike, so.
That was his brief.
That was, it was pretty.
Yeah, that was brief for Mike, yeah.
I'll, I'll keep it super brief because I, I cannot probably top that and I don't need to because he said many, many things that I feel, and I'm newer and I'm far less patient because I see the potential and I'm passionate about the potential in this town. We, when we were the steering committee, we had, the green dots were our votes. Part of the reason why we centered on certain things was the whole idea of you, if you peanut butter, it's going to lose the impact of really doing at least the one thing that's so visible right. And so that's kind of, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that, yeah, there's a lot of things we'd love to do, but I think if we can get Main Street right, we can use other options to get more influx in, whether it's grants, whether it's fundraising for some of those smaller things. Because Pine Street Plaza was a, a very, you know, important thing. There's other things on the list, but again, we had to make trade-offs as you all have to make trade-offs all the time. But for me, this is really the time for the council to walk their talk about the importance of the downtown. I think literally I'm, I'm, I'm trying not to be competitive, but I am. And I think that Moscow is just getting so weird. We have the opportunity to really get businesses over here from them. Let's do it. Let's make Pullman look so awesome. And Pullman is so well-educated and such a great place to be. Let's make it a great, great place to hang out. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Judy.
Mayor Johnson, council members, thank you so much. My name is Holly Greystone. I'm the executive director of the Downtown Pullman Association. And I just wanted to thank you for investing in our downtown community and for all the hard work and planning efforts that you're doing. This project will enhance one of our key gems, our historic downtown, by creating a people-centric and active, vibrant and accessible downtown for all. In February 2020, city council signed a memorandum of understanding with Washington State University and the Downtown Pullman Association and Chamber of Commerce as a sign of our commitment to the revitalization of our downtown. As the city of Pullman has lived up to its commitment by supporting the Downtown Pullman Association and prioritizing the ARPA funding for the downtown infrastructure, so too has the Downtown Pullman Association lived up to its commitment by hiring its first executive director, establishing an office in downtown and participating as a stakeholder in the Project Downtown Pullman Steering Committee, among many other achievements over the last two years. I am grateful for the hard work of our community and the commitment of these members and their support. This is a once in a generation opportunity to reinvest in downtown Pullman and the stakes are high for all of us to get it right. Downtown Vitality is a public and private partnership that relies on local government to create a vibrant streetscape and public spaces and for entrepreneurs to develop attractive, interesting and unique commercial ventures that attract customers to downtown Pullman. Bless you. As the main street organization leading the revitalization of downtown Pullman, the DPA is working to encourage businesses and property owners to invest in our beautiful, historic downtown and supporting new and established businesses during this construction. We can see revitalization happening. We have 10 new businesses. Mila Bangladesh, Nairit Mexican Restaurant, Dom's Donuts, Sugar Bay Bakery, Terracotta Pottery, Monarch Boutique, Chari Amor, Grounded Goods, McCoy Hotel, Greystone Grand Gallery and Gifts, which will have three new storefronts available for rent, and Monroe is expanding. This journey has just begun. To quote from the downtown master plan, the key to this plan's success will be leadership. Leadership to promote in the belief in downtown's existing strength and to build confidence for new investments. Downtown Pullman Association is here to provide the motivation, organization, support and leadership as our community embarks on this significant public and private reinvestment in downtown. And I thank you for investing in downtown Pullman. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and council members for allowing the steering committee members to provide commentary to you. They put a lot of time and effort, as the council member knows, that we're part of that process. Excuse me, the last thing we're at here is, not the last thing, last thing for me, there's one more thing for Brian, was just to look at the, the prioritization that we've laid out there and if council is interested in giving direction. When Sean and I had talked about this, and I think he, he discussed it with Mike and, and Mayor Johnson about it, was direction on whether or not to proceed with putting engineering services agreements on any one of those items or whether we're going to wait and kick it down the road. I don't know if I've captured that, Mike.
I think you captured that perfectly, Phil. Nathan, you said you had a comment.
Absolutely. Thank you. You know, as has already been mentioned, this is an amazing project and everybody out there, I think it's important for you to know, you know, I've been on here since, I don't know, I was 26. I'm 40 now, so it's been a while. And, you know, this is the most that I've seen, at least for the council, being invested in downtown efforts. But that also comes from all of you being invested in us showing your interest. And, I mean, it's amazing. I, I, I find it amazing downtown. Judy, my significant other is going to be coming to your studio to, you know, learn to be a teacher. You know, Mike, I've been to a number of different, you know, your places. I mean, even back when we were doing entrepreneur highlights, way, way back, you know? I, I'm still waiting to get to your place of business. Holly, I saw just the other day in a local business. Willow is always, you know, a powerhouse. DJ Goldfinger, you are just, you know, amazing the amount of things you do. And, you know, I got to say, it's, it's because of all of you that we're here. And I want to say we're as invested in, in you as you are in us. That being said, of course, this comes down to the amazing work you've done.
Oh, thanks.
And I'm going to, you know, give up the floor, let others speak, but I just wanted to mention your amazing work and all the investment that all of you out there have been in us. So thank you.
Megan?
So as the city council representative on the steering committee and you guys do great work, I thought the process was good. And I want to speak more as a longtime Pullman person who grew up here, walked around downtown when she was, you know, 12 years old, when there was Trent Candy and has seen how downtown has changed. And I, I just want to commend, I don't know if that's the right word. I, I admire small business owners because I know that I couldn't do it. I'm, I'm risk adverse that way. And I'm always amazed at the investment of time and energy and what they do to make Pullman what it is. We need to do this. This is the next level and we have to do it. It is a once in a generation opportunity. We're not going to get this money again. I'm tired of hearing about how we're going to change downtown. This is it. This is our opportunity. So we need to move forward.
So basically tonight, the council direction is what you're looking for and you talk about the available funds that you have, it's 9 million 100. You have a proposal for 9 million 400. That means we'd come up with something local. We also know that we have some definitely inflation problems that we're dealing with right now. So if you're looking for the council direction for the first two items, would cover the budget that we have? Or you want us to go further on this?
I'll, I'll just elaborate a little bit, Mayor Johnson, on the thinking on that. The, the last two items are not a gigantic design effort. And, and the budget includes, I think I mentioned to council last time, it includes a 15% contingency and includes an 8% inflation rate. And we're at, you know, we're like at 10% design. And so we're generally estimating on the conservative, which would be the high side. One thought is to, if council gives direction, to go forward with designing one through four. We then end up with the opportunity to perhaps put all those out to bid, see what the market tells us, right? Because that's what's ultimately going to happen. And if the market says, gosh, the low bid comes in at 8.9 million for all four, great, the council could award them. If it comes in too high, we will have done it in alternates. So the council could just award one and two, but not three and four. So that was the thinking, Mayor Johnson, behind that, that idea.
So right now, let's just entertain a motion. We've heard some comments from people on the first four were designed. And Heiling?
I'm not ready for a motion yet. I think we need to talk a little bit about some of the nuts and bolts on these as they are listed in your, in the one that, the one that looks like this.
Yep.
In general, I'm, I'm delighted with all of this and I agree that this is, I've been here 50 years and this is the first time we've seen some real movement. It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's good to, it's good to, it's good to feel this, this positive. But there were just some odd, kind of weird things that was in your, your memorandum, Phil. I kind of went through it with a fine tooth comb and you know how I'm going to pick on you because I always do.
That's, that's great.
What's the difference between angled parking and diagonal parking?
It's the same.
Okay, so that's a typo.
Yep. Or, yeah, it's, they're terms of art that are conflated.
So, yeah, we, so, because that, that came up. And I also want to make it nice and sparkling clear that I, I really hope I have not lied to people when I say there will be no back end angled parking. Have I lied?
You have not lied.
Okay.
Well, I, I'll say that it's not in any of our concepts or anything. That was early.
Do I got you, do I got you on that?
You got me, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yep, it was early removed.
Because I do believe that these changes are absolutely foundational as you, as you say here, and I love that phrase and you use it several times. So that, that's great. And the one other thing that, that came up in the steering committee was about the time restricted parking on Grand. The steering committee said absolutely no. Absolutely no. And we gave all sorts of reasons for absolutely no. And I, I'm curious as to why. And we gave all sorts of reasons for absolutely no, and I'm curious as to why it keeps showing up.
As compared to remove the parking completely or leave the parking in place?
Not as opposed to as an item at all. We have, we have options, that, I mean, the steering committee was adamant about that was not an option.
You're correct, they were that way. There are decisions that come to this level, there are policy-level decisions that the council has an obligation to deal with, and one of them is your relationship with Washdot. You'll have a requirement at some point that says, you're at Level of Service E, you need to do something. The council can't simply say, I'm going to ignore you, Washdot.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just suggesting that I want to make sure that it was sparkling clear from the steering committee that that was not something that we wanted to pursue.
Totally fair, totally fair. And we, and we had, in fact, Mike Yates and I have had animated discussions about this. And he suggested we go to the governor and ask him about going to Level of Service F.
F.
You said go to a higher authority.
I said elevate.
Yeah, elevate it, well, who, yeah. So, but you're completely right, Councilmember.
Yeah, if we're looking at a five to 10-year window, which you indicate on the, on the second to the last page of this whole packet.
Yep.
Which also troubles me, because you have the freight bypass in here, and that makes me unhappy.
Well, and that was, that's a pocket slide that-
So, what's a pocket slide?
A pocket slides are if you put them in, if they end up being a topic of discussion and someone wants to ask about it.
Okay, I'm taking this one out of my pocket, then. Yeah, because that was mentioned in the storybook, the people had gotten wind of that and were not happy about it. I don't see how that fits into any of this at all.
It's not part of the current study or plan. It was, it's a slide that's been in there, and Sean normally calls them out.
So, I will put it back in my pocket and leave it there forever and ever, amen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Francis?
So, as a part of this discussion, really what's before us is, as a council, do we move forward now on this, or is this something that we want more discussion, more deliberation? Personally, for me, I feel that you have answered the questions that we need to have answered in order to move forward to the next step. I do like the direction with actually putting out for bid the first four. I anticipate, well, I'm hopeful that we can get the four, I anticipate it's going to be the two, just with how life has been in these last few years. So, with that, Mayor Johnson, I do propose for approval for us to go out on bid on the first four items, as here indicated.
Second. I've heard a second. Pat, you had a comment?
I started this meeting with the thought that I needed more information and more clarification. I was not able to attend the June 28th meeting when you had your first presentation. I did watch it, however, and I appreciate all the time and work that went into this. You have made it very clear as far as the questions that I had, and I think that Eileen cleared up a few of the questions that she had as well. I think it's fundamental in this, and I know you touched on it, as did Megan, you talk about the foundational basis of what we're doing, but that only is also as good as the partnerships that we're able to develop with the property owners, with the business owners, and, you know, the community in general. And that's where the communication plan is absolutely vital at every pivot of this plan. And so, I think as we go through even, you know, asking for bids on these four items, we are communicating that to everyone that needs to know, should know, has the opportunity to know. And, you know, I think as council people, and, you know, I understand Mike Yates' point about the trees, but that is, as you said, that's an emotional issue, it's very important to people, and we have to make sure that we are listening to those concerns as well. And that's where the communication piece just is absolutely vital. And I appreciate your recognition of that. Thank you, great work on all of this, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, if I might indulge, because it actually segues in to the public-private partnership element here, as we were working through, you know, the public side of this, the steering committee members, Mike and Judy specifically, Chris Chandler as well, spoke up and said, gosh, you know, how do, is there ways for the private property owners to participate in generating funding for either capital or ongoing operations and maintenance? Because, gosh, we want the trees trimmed, we want the snow plowed off the sidewalk. And so, we said, well, sure, here's a couple of vehicles that are commonly used in the state of Washington, as well as Idaho or other states. And so, Sean and I talked a little bit about it, again, I think he spoke with Mike and the mayor about it. I've just taken maybe five minutes and letting Brian run through some scenarios, just so the council is kind of on the same place that the property owners are, because it couldn't have legs to actually move into a little bit of property owner operational or capital funding. So, I'll turn it over to Brian.
So, I've only got four slides, and this is one of them. This is about three funding mechanisms that you might use, any one of them or all three of them, to pay for things locally that you might, you're probably not going to have another $10 million in federal money soon. It's an opportunity to fund different things. I just want to describe how each one of them works, so that everybody kind of has the same vocabulary about what the opportunities are, because I've already heard several times in the community in the last few months, them kind of mixed up with each other. So, there's local improvement districts, which are a very common technique used all over the place, all over Washington, all over the country, to fund physical infrastructure, funded by properties near where that physical infrastructure is going to get built or replaced or fixed up. There are urban renewal areas, which use a thing called tax increment financing, which fund infrastructure and facilities, particularly in conjunction with or to attract and support private investment. And there are things that in Washington are called business improvement areas, they're called economic improvement districts in Oregon, they're called business improvement districts in Idaho, they've got all kinds of names all across the country. But they are for ongoing operations and maintenance and activities, ongoing activities like the organization promotion, design, and economic vitality activities that the Main Street program is all about. And I just want to take a moment to explain how each of those work, because they, like I say, you might use any one of these or all three of them in Pullman. So, local improvement district, as I said, very commonly used to fund infrastructure. It gets used for streets, sidewalks, bridges, parks, utilities, people-centric amenities, like a lot of the stuff that's in your master plan. The example that's there on the screen is Langley, Washington, where a local improvement district was used to fund pedestrian amenities, benches, bushes, it was designed by Framework, who was one of the partners on this design team. The diagram on the right explains how this works. If you imagine that these buildings here are the value of properties downtown today, and then, over time, there's going to be appreciation, and that will increase the value of those buildings. There may be other improvements that have nothing to do with this scenario that also increase the improvements to those buildings. But the local improvement district is based on the notion that you're going to make some improvements right around those buildings that's going to increase the value of those improvements. And the city, using the authority of the city, is going to take a portion of the value that's added to those buildings, and take that value and use it to pay for those improvements that are going to make those values. So, one example that probably everybody's heard of that's going on right now in Washington is Seattle's waterfront redevelopment. They, there was an elevated highway removed and a tunnel built, that wasn't part of this scheme, but then, now they're building a world-class waterfront park for the whole length of the waterfront, and presumably, all of the properties that are kind of close to that, their value is going to go up, because they're going to be by this world-class park. And the city of Seattle took part of the value, that increased value, and basically that meant that all those property owners that were close by had to write a check to the city for a portion of that added value. So, specific example, if you own a building today and it's worth $1 million, and somebody's going to, the city's going to build a park across the street, it's going to be a fancy park, and suddenly people are going to want to occupy your building, your, across from that park, now it's worth $1.2 million. So, $200,000 increase. And the city's going to say, you know what, you're going to pay us $100,000, and we're going to use that, and so, from other properties, and we're going to pay for the construction of that park. So, in the end of the day, you've had to pay $100,000, but now you own a $1.2 million building, so you're $100,000 better off. The city can offer you the option to just write a check or to finance it over time. The city can borrow money based on those receipts coming in, so you can bond for construction of the park. Park gets built, everybody's better off. That's what a local improvement district is, like I say, very common for these kind of improvements, as well as bridges and utility improvements and things like that. The second model is an urban renewal area or tax increment financing. This is newer in Washington, it hasn't been authorized for a long time, but now it is. Very common in Idaho, very common in Oregon. The example on the screen is the Salem, Oregon Convention Center, an adjacent parking garage and a hotel. And tax increment financing was used to pay for the parking garage. And so, the idea here, as in this diagram on the right, is that you have the value of property in a district that's in the area of these improvements. It's growing over time, and the city and all the other governments are collecting some taxes on that. And then, one day, you create this district, and the baseline, the property value is whatever it is that day, and that's going to continue, it's still going to be there, and the government entities, the city, the county, the schools, everybody else is going to keep collecting taxes on that value. But the taxes on this increased value are going to go to pay for improvements that relate to this increment. So, the taxes on that hotel are going to go to pay for the parking, pay off the bonds on the parking garage that's next to it. And that's in place for a period of time like 20 years, and then, eventually it ends, and the taxes all continue to be collected by the local government, and we're off and running. Lewiston has used this a lot to pay for improvements in Lewiston. Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, has a number, they're just masters of this. Phil Boyd has done a lot of work there on this. So, this is a technique that could be used to try and maybe attract a new hotel or other private investment. Had you done one of these right before Evolve was built, you could be using the taxes that Evolve is paying to pay for some improvements in the downtown. Or if another building like that was going to get built, you could do that. Both of these two that I've just mentioned are about building stuff, that are about capital improvements. Neither one is a good source of funds for maintenance and ongoing operations. So, it's kind of a frustration with local improvement districts, is you can plant trees with them, but you can't prune trees with them, which is, can be a problem over time. This third one, I was involved in helping create in Oregon, they're now in place all over the country, for exactly that reason. They are specifically designed to fund ongoing operations. Essentially, what you do is you identify a district, this is the East Sprague Business Improvement Area in Spokane, you identify a specific area, and you assess the buildings and/or businesses in that area to fund various things related to improving, to basically in their interest. You can do marketing and promotions, safety and security, cleaning and maintenance, design improvements, retail business strategies, strong management. When you're in Spokane, you may see people out sweeping the sidewalks, that's what's paying for that, is downtown businesses or downtown properties and downtown businesses that are paying an assessment. It's imposed by the city council, it's a mandatory assessment. The great thing about that is everybody pays their fair share, and it's not just a few folks like Mike and Judy who are making their investments alone, it's everybody's contributing together. It can pay for all the things that the Downtown Pullman Association is doing. It's a great funding source for those ongoing activities. So, I just wanted to run through those three funding strategies, is something you might consider over time to augment the things that you're going to use your federal funds for. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them, I know we've been talking for a long time, so you might not, but.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, Mayor Johnson and council members, thanks for sticking with us. I know that was a lot of information, we really appreciate your guys' commitment, it's been, we work with a lot of city council, both, I've mentioned this before, you guys are super engaged, so sure appreciate being able to work with you and move the project forward.
All right, thank you very much. Really appreciate the quality. Next on the agenda is called the public comment area, this is for people who would like to make a comment on any final action the council is taking tonight. We have two different items that have public hearings already scheduled for that, and if there's any new business that would come up near the end. Is there anybody who'd like to make a public comment on a final action that has before the council tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, this is item number F. Do I hear a motion to read the consent agenda by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That, Laura McIlum.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 19, 2022, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 107340 through 107421, totaling $202,130.47. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 107422 through 107495, totaling $890,458.14. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 107496 through 107504. Electronic transfers 71, 72, and 892 through 896. Payroll direct deposits numbered 78354 through 78709, totaling $981,338.85. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 107505 through 107556, totaling $800,732.60. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable electronic funds transfer numbered 6252022, totaling $58,683.82. A motion setting August 23, 2022, as a public hearing date to consider the Pullman Transit fare policy. A resolution number R-43-22, a resolution accepting a stormwater easement granted by Pullman School District number 267, authorizing the execution of said easement and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Resolution number R-44-22, a resolution accepting a waterline easement granted by Pullman School District number 267, authorizing the execution of said easement and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Resolution number R-45-22, a resolution approving a six-year transit development plan for calendar years 2022 through 2027, and 2021 annual report for Pullman Transit. Resolution number R-46-22, a resolution adopting proposed route changes to the public transportation system, effective August 18, 2022, for the 2022 through 2023 service year. And resolution number R-47-22, a resolution accepting the bid of Source Electric for the third electric bus charger for the city of Pullman Bus Barn, and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
Is there any item the council would like to offer discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items 1 through 12, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That, we now move to item number H in our agenda tonight, this is the public hearing on a proposed six-year capital improvement program for the city of Pullman, the calendar years 2023 through 2028. RJ Lott.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. This item before you this evening is for a public hearing on the annual capital improvement plan for the years 2023 through 2028. The timeline on this project dates back originally to June 20th, when the CIP committee met to consider the various fundings requested in the draft CIP. Two of the council members were on that committee, and the other council members, Benjamin and Weller, along with Planning Commission members, O'Callahan and Carper, and Devin Felstetter as Citizen at Large. Those recommendations were forwarded to the Planning Commission at their meeting on August 24, 2022. The Planning- The planning commission reviewed those items to ensure that they meet the intent of the recently adopted comprehensive plan. In this year's CIP, to provide for a better document, staff has incorporated following changes for the years 2023 through 2028, including identifying the specific city council goals, and if those don't apply, perhaps the city comprehensive plan goals and policies. Each of the items included in this year's CIP for 2023 do have available funding through the CIP fund, or reserves, or grant funding. Two items to note, that the fire station 3, along with the police station facility and court facility, are placed in the year 2024, and are intended to be funded by a bond. Are there any questions I can answer at this time?
Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. RJ, I know there was a lot of discussion regarding the movement of the fire station to a later year, when it had originally been placed in, I believe it was 23, 24, and then we had moved it, CIP moved it to 26, is that correct, originally? Is it on 24 now?
I believe it's 24.
Okay, all right. Hang on, I think it's still 26 unless it got changed since the first draft. Let me look it up. The, the draft of the document should not have changed from when it was distributed, so I'm pulling it up right now to confirm that.
2028 is the design and construction.
So, if it's in 28 for construction, 27 would be for engineering, 26 would be for bond.
Okay. So, the reason I bring this up is, there was a significant discussion regarding the movement of the construction of the fire station, when in previous CIP meetings, that had been in 2024, as you had mentioned, I believe. And Francis, of course, was there, this took up a significant amount, and there was some confusion about why it was moved, because, right now, as it's planned, both the police station and the fire station would go out to bond two significant projects. Go out to bond for the citizens on the same year. That is a chunk of change for the citizens to take on. And as I said, again, the fire station had been planned, even when I was on CIP many years ago, for that 2024. So, I'm bringing this up because Brent said he would be bringing it up in his meeting, we said we would bring it up in ours as well. It is my personal opinion that it needs to be moved up to 2024, and not create such a significant burden for both bonds to be going out on 2026. However, Francis, I'll yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Nathan. As, as Councilman Weller stated, there was considerable discussion on this with the change, and part of it had to do with the change in the CIP process, where it used to be that the, the projects were brought to the CIP committee, and the CIP committee then, then kind of delved out and figured out how much can we afford, and figured out the cut lines in the process. This year, the administration spent more time with the department heads in order to bring a recommendation of what they felt was, was realistic, and that was the piece that made the move. I, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Weller, that I'd like to see it sooner than later. I, I feel that it's, it's something that's needed, but I also understand that the explanation that was provided, the CIP committee was that it was an agreement that they didn't feel that there was enough lead time at this point in time, in order to prepare the groundwork and the preparation, in order to do a bond that early. So, it's, it's something that, and it's, and the only way that I could see it change would be if there was a city council goal later that, that moved and actually shifted staff resources, which, which aren't available at this time. In that consideration, that's something where I'm in, in agreement for moving forward with our CIP as it's being proposed to us, but it's something that I'd like to see a little bit more work done, in order to prepare, so that we have a good groundwork, because bonds are very challenging in this day and age, and making sure that we have everything, everything sequenced properly, and, and I understand the time that they want, that, that leadership wants to take in order to make sure everything's prepped and ready for it, but, but I do feel that if there's, if it's possible for us to move things forward faster, it would be helpful for our staff and for our community.
Becky, you had your hand up.
Yeah, and so, because we're not going out for bond as in 2024, all of those things that were listed in the CIP, the, for the police, it was the HVAC lockers, things like that, that were all listed that said, if we're not going out for bond, this item, we'll put in the new HVAC, that kind of thing, we're going forward with those, is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Eileen.
Yeah, for, for our benefit and for the benefit of the public, could you walk us through what the process would be, should we choose to move it to 24, 25?
You could make a motion to, to amend the, the draft, and then, when the resolution is brought forward to you in two weeks' time, that amendment would be shown in the, the final preparation of the CIP.
And then, what happens after that? Did that, does that, who does that put the pressure on to get their stuff going, to, to make it happen?
Well, if you wanted to move those projects up, that would, the pressure would really lie, rely upon the funding of those projects, so we'd have to find a way to fund those adequately for the years included in the CIP.
Wouldn't there be also an examination of the bonding capacity that the city has, considering we're still paying off the bonds for this building, and for the property that we bought, or that we have, to purchase the land for the fire station?
Right.
And other things, so, Mike Urban?
Yeah, and then on top of that, too, there's the education component of going out and educating the community to pass the bond, bonds cost money to run, so there would be, the, staff would gather data, council would be able to lobby, I believe, for this, under their powers, or no? I know staff can't.
Informational.
The city can provide information only, the city council, in addition to adopting the bond ordinance, could adopt a resolution in support of approving the bond ordinance, and then individually, each of you can go out and talk to your constituents.
Right. And then, there'd be the deciding pieces of how to, what that bond would include, would it also include all the equipment that goes in the station? How will we fund the staff for that station? So, there's a lot of research to be done, and on top of all this, we'll be starting the new CIP process this December, remember, we're moving everything up, so this document will be working on 2023 items, as if we're off to go, but all the other items, we can move some things around, new things will appear. So, if the instructions are to, yeah, get ready for a bond in 2024, we've, we'd be scrambling to do some groundwork, but we would get it done. And I agree with Councilmember Benjamin, I think modifying the goals and priorities to include this would help us out.
So, that would be the most practical way to make this happen? Would be to start at that goal-setting process in our next round?
No, because the next goal-setting process will be too late.
That's sort of what I was curious about, yeah.
So, it would have to be amending the goals, and I, if the goals are gonna be amended on a regular basis, that kind of, on a personal note for my staff and I, that, we struggle with that, because now it's a moving target again.
Yeah.
But we could do it. I don't, I, I'm not promising success of passing a bond, but we'll put the legwork in.
Francis.
Since we do have a CIP process that is gonna be started in December, my recommendation would be that we accept the CIP as is, but as a council, we direct staff to give us a timeline, and what are the different sequence steps, as it relates to the, the bonding and the bonding capacity, and, and the preparation. And, and, and if we had that before the December CIP, then that could help give then direction into the CIP.
Nathan.
So, if we wait till December, wouldn't that put more of a crunch on getting the information out?
What I was saying is that we would ask staff to prepare, to, to prepare information to us of what's involved in the decision of, of deciding when to do the bond, what are the different issues, what are the different steps, in order for us as a council to then come together and, and make a decision on, is, is it better to do the bond when it's, where it's currently located in the CIP, or does, as a city, with all of our other projects we're working on, we have the capacity to move it up two years? So, so not waiting till December, but this would be a request for the staff to provide us more information of the process, in order for us to make a decision.
Yeah, Eileen.
Because as, as many of you have heard me say, that ballot timing is everything when it comes to a bond. So, this would give us the, the tools in our toolbox to shake and shuffle and see what's gonna be the most successful, and what's gonna serve the community the best, because I am, I am getting, you know, I'm getting anxious about getting that third fire station moving in some way, shape, or form. It just seems to be, you know, the gut feeling right thing to do, but if we have that specific roadmap, as Francis has, has provided guidance on, that's gonna make me really happy, and then I'll decide which cliff to jump off of at that time.
Okay, Becky?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, too, I mean, I think the most important thing is a successful bond, and so, I'm, I'm good with waiting, and a reminder that we do have several items in the CIP that, that make what we have, some, some stopgap measures to make it a little bit more livable. The police need to be cooled in the summer, and they need to be heated in the winter, and that's in there. And then, I just wanna say, as a new council member, I just really, to city staff, to thank you so much, the city staff, the, the committee that worked on this, the planning commission, this was so well put together and organized so well, I sat down on a Saturday afternoon, and I thought 257 pages, I don't know, I don't know how I'm gonna get through it, I can only imagine what it was like to put it together, but the way it was put together, I actually went right through it and read all of it, and I just wanna extend a thank you, I can only imagine the hours and the planning and the thinking that went into that, thank you so much, as a new council member, thank you.
Yeah, Nathan.
You know, Becky, that's a really good point, because that was something that, at CIP, we were sitting down, and we were saying, this is really impressive, because before, when we were on, it would be several hours, you would have to, you'd tell people, you know, I might be here four or five hours, so, you know, gonna have to grab lunch, gonna have to be prepared, can't go for water, you know, the whole thing. So, no, RJ, you've done amazing, Mike, the, all of the departments, if the council feels comfortable with what Francis has advised, then, of course, I, I just would really, and I, I'll just emphasize, I would really hate for us to come to 2026, going forward with two very, very significant bond measures at the same time, you know, for all of us citizens, to, to front, that would be very, very difficult. It's my, my own comment.
We have a number of items tonight, and we have to do a public hearing right now, on this one and another one, so, yes.
Can I, for just a moment, before we open the public hearing, I appreciate the comments, and that was the whole point of when I arrived, and Adam and I worked on this, fixing this project, because everything was so focused on the next year, you wouldn't have seen a bond in year six on previous documents, and that was the whole point, is getting that bond item on this document, to start this conversation from the council, so we can get the direction. So, I, I feel like we've kind of accomplished what we were hoping through this, and we'll be looking forward for that direction as the days come on.
Okay. RJ, any further comments before we have an open public hearing?
Nope.
Okay, at this time, anybody who would like to make any comment on the capital improvement program, we'll have a two-minute limit, if you wanna come, you can identify yourself before the microphone, and we can go from there. This is comment on the capital improvement program for the next six years. Going once, going twice, closing the public hearing on this matter. Okay? RJ, you're up again, so, next item is a public hearing on the six-year transportation improvement program for the city of Pullman, for the calendar years 2023 through 2028.
Yes, thanks, thanks again, Mayor and City Council, so, this is the TIP for the same timeframe as the CIP, 2023 through 2028, this is run concurrently with our CIP, and as mentioned earlier, to align with state reporting requirements, we'll start this process a little bit early in December for next year, 2023. So, arterial street projects are proposed to be funded with grants from the Transportation Improvement Board, the Washington State Department of Transportation, and the Federal Surface Transportation Program, and locally received arterial gas taxes. Transit projects in this TIP are proposed to be funded with federal transportation administration grants, Washington State Department of Transportation grants, state rural mobility grants, and transit fund reserves. So, in your, in your packet for this evening, are those projects for the TIP, and at this time, hold a public hearing, and provide public comments if there are any for this 2023 through 2028 TIP.
First of all, go to the council for any comments on the transportation program. If no comments, we'll go to the public hearing, so, anyone in the public who would like to make a comment on the six-year transportation improvement program for the city of Pullman for 2023 through 2028, going once, twice, close the public hearing. Thank you, RJ, for, for your work and staff on this, we really appreciate it. We now move to the regular agenda, first item is a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Pullman and Hatfield and Dawson, consulting electrical engineers for purpose of city of Pullman radio system upgrade. We have our administrative sergeant, Greg Umbright, here tonight. Also a pretty good snow cone maker that I saw at the, at the different areas, you've been really volunteering, and we had a wonderful night, national night out on Tuesday, so again, thank you, Greg, for a lot of your organization on that.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I would like to propose that resolution R-48-22 is accepted, you guys have the materials in front of you, and I would like to apologize right now for a error I created on page one. On the third paragraph down, it says TASER, execute a copy therefore to TASER International. TASER International has nothing to do with this, it should say Hatfield and Dawson. That's the only correction needed.
Any further questions? If not, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moving second, Laura, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution number R-48-22, a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Pullman and Hatfield and Dawson, consulting electrical engineers for the purpose of city of Pullman radio system upgrade project.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Next comes a resolution authorizing the execution of a Washington State Transportation Improvement Board grant, application for Bishop Boulevard resurfacing project, authorizing the acceptance and execution of the grant agreement, and here with that, Clayton Forstman, our deputy public works director.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, City Council, I have a very brief PowerPoint here, so I'll walk through this quickly. The Washington State Transportation Improvement Board, known as TIB, has an annual funding program called the Arterial Preservation Program. This program aims to address declining street conditions in medium-sized cities. The program's limited to two-inch grind and overlays as a treatment method. This is an effort to defray high-cost preventative, high-cost preservation projects, and allow cities to concentrate their limited resources on lower-cost preventive maintenance. This should sound familiar, as it follows in line with our pavement management system, which focuses on the right treatment at the right time philosophy to extend pavement life. This year's calls for projects was opened June 1, with applications due This year's calls for projects was opened June 1st with applications due on August So city staff went ahead and used that pavement management system. We identified the best street for this year's grant application that also fits in with TIB's scoring criteria. That street is Bishop Boulevard, which is shown over here on the map. So it's highlighted in red. It's from Fairmount Drive to East Main Street and the project consists of a two-inch grind and overlay. Staff have already completed a design of the project, a conceptual design, ahead of the grant application deadline. Based on that preparatory work, the total project cost is just over 713,000 and the local match contribution would be just over 158,000, which would come from the arterial street fund. TIB would announce awards later this year, giving us time to complete the design, bid it in the spring and construct it next year. Staff recommends that council adopt a prepared resolution aligned for submission of the grant application and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions of Clayton, yes. Okay. You might just mention briefly when we resurfaced it last. It didn't seem like it was. And can we ever get three inches that could last us longer than the two inches? I mean, those are just questions that I have when I'm going through the project.
Not, not under this program. We couldn't.
Okay.
And I'm not, I couldn't tell you the date off the top of my head.
In Terreview, we used some recycled material. We can't, we tried that project then.
We use the same grant program, same grant application to do this year's project.
Okay.
Eileen.
Just out of curiosity, what's the, what's the inflation contingent percentage built into this? Cause if the price of asphalt continues the way it is.
We've been carrying eight percent through everything.
Eight percent?
Annually.
Yep. Okay. Hope that's enough.
I think he's being generous as, yeah, just seeing what's come through in the airport. There's no further questions? Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move that we adopt resolution number R-49-22.
Second.
Moving second, Laura?
Resolution number R-49-22, a resolution authorizing the execution of a Washington State Transportation Improvement Board grant application for the Bishop Boulevard resurfacing project, authorizing the acceptance and execution of the grant agreement if awarded and other matters related thereto.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. Item number three is another resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of a universal transit access pass program agreement. Here's Wayne Thompson, our transit manager.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The resolution before you will approve the city's annual transit contract with WSU. We typically renegotiate a contract annually with WSU to prepay ridership on the city's transit system and this particular contract will cover the full 2022 to 2023 school year. This represents our first full year contract since 2019 after four consecutive amendments dating back to the spring of 2020. So this puts us on, on the right track. WSU is and has been for a long time a significant supporter of our system and rely, we rely heavily on their, their contract. In fact, two of their staff members, Gabby Rodriguez and Cody Wilson, have spent their evening here in support of, of this contract. And if I have any questions for them, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer. When WSU's revenue capacity is down and our operating budget's impacted, we also make associated changes in our service levels. And through the service levels that were recently approved, for this coming August, we're about 85% service level, 85% of full and that's compared to 2019. So with the calculated impact of this current contract to the value of our last full service contract and built in inflation, we're, we're at 85% where we should be with the revenue we have. Adjustments are made based on the WSU contract change. This contract is also on the, the same path as we have for the past couple of years of a universal transit access pass format. That prepaid ridership, that's the focus of those types of contracts and it's fairly common in university system contracts. We're still holding out hope that in time we can return to our former version, which was a enhanced level of service contract, but that relies on changes in the governor's vaccine mandate for contractors. So at this point, this is the, the best format for our situation. I'm requesting adoption of the resolution, which would authorize the execution of this contract for the 2022 to 2023 school year. If you have to answer any questions.
Any further questions of Wayne, minus? If not, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, Laura?
Resolution number R-50-22, a resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of a universal transit access pass program agreement between the city of Pullman and Washington State University for the 2022 to 2023 school year.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I, I just couldn't help thank John Shaheen was here tonight and he got to leave and, and you stayed here because you're supporting it. Thank you very much for doing that. But I, I imagine John was sort of smiling when he walked out here and said, you know, I've sat through a number of those over the years. Okay, Art Garrel is here now for a motion to authorize staff to execute sole source contract for replacement of a heat exchanger for the wastewater treatment plant. Art?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This evening I come here to ask the council to approve the sole source procurement of a heat exchanger at the wastewater treatment plant. Kind of, I, I know that you, in your packet, you was given a, it was included in a memo from Sean that kind of explained the background of it and, and that. So just to give a little background for the people maybe out there watching, the heat exchanger is a very important part of the treatment process. It basically is the component that heats the digested, the, the, the di, the material from the digester to keep it up, you know, about a hundred degrees or thereabouts. And so we have three of them at the plant and each one of them heats its own digester. And so the one, one of them, and I get, um, one of them has, has gone down and what happened is it's created a leak in the sleeve inside of it that the, that the heated water goes through and then the sludge passes over that sleeve and it heats. And so that, with that leak, it's unable to heat it enough. And unfortunately, we, Trevor had contacted, Trevor Cook, our wastewater treatment plant supervisor, and his staff had contacted the manufacturer and there really is no good way to replace it or, you know, come in and do repairs or anything like that. Being a critical component of the plant, um, you know, it was, at the time it happened, which was several months ago, um, it was identified that that procurement was going to take a long time. It's one of those, another one of those things that we have to order it now and we have to wait months and months and we really need to have this thing up and running before the winter when the cold gets here and the heating, um, the heating of the digester takes more, it's, takes more to heat it. So we went ahead and we made the decision to go ahead and order it and then afterwards we were talking about how to, you know, bring that to you and, um, Laura had suggested that we ask, because it is a sole source. This is kind of a unique situation in that, um, we're buy, the, this, this manufacturer doesn't sell through a distributorship. So just, so you, you buy directly from the manufacturer. So, um, we don't have, you know, I can't, we can't really do a bid because we need to have the exact one because of the piping configuration and all that. Once we change that, then we ha, would have to go back and potentially have, you know, do some design work and it would just take way too long. And so, you know, the only really option we have is to procure one exactly like it so it just fits right in. And so with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any, any questions? I know he gave us some pretty good descriptions of what it does, so I think you have a pretty good idea there. Since it's not the dinner hour, we're good. Any other questions? Then do I hear a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
So motion to authorize staff to execute a sole source contract for replacement of heat exchanger for the wastewater treatment plant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next comes a motion to authorize staff to purchase two single axle dump plow trucks, outfitted with snow plows and tailgate spreaders. Ryan, you've got everything there, you've put in the titles, so. Ryan Lancaster.
I'll try to cut it down in the future. Thank you, Mayor. Um, and good evening, council members. So before you, I have a, an agreement to purchase two dump trucks. These are replacements for existing fleet vehicles we have. They are, our existing vehicles are now 20 and 15 years old. And it's in order to update and have a more cost-effective fleet, we'd like to replace these two. Uh, we are using a state contract, a Washington state contract on this, which provides us a 40% discount over the MSRP. This, the cost for each of these vehicles is 312,980. Unfortunately, like other, other large equipment, we're seeing a high increase in cost over the past year. So compared to what we had budgeted, we are seeing a, about a 16% increase over that, which equates to 42,980. As far as ERD's reserve, we are, we have sufficient reserve to pay for it and we've collected funds over the life of the two vehicles we have now. However, we present it to you because it's over the CIP approved amount. We, um, we expect to have these delivered late next year and we will budget appropriate funds so that we can fund it next year. And the two items we have now will be surplus and go back to paying for the new ones. Any questions with, I can feel? If not, I recommend we.
But you have the sufficient plow trucks to handle the coming winter since this is not coming until next year?
Yep. The.
Just wanted to make sure the public knows that.
Keeping them running and, yep.
Any other further questions? Ann?
To that point, with all of the increased residential development that we're seeing, do you, does the department anticipate a need to add another unit at some point?
We, uh, we are looking at, there is an item on CIP this year for a tandem axle dump truck, a larger one. And we're in discussions with Sean about funding for that. And so one of the proposals I'm going to propose to him is a leasing option, which spreads it out over several years because currently the, the funds that this, that vehicle would come out of are a little tight, but, um, so that, that is one we're working on. And that, you know, will provide us another means of clearing those main artery roads during snowfall.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion on this? Motion number five. Oh, Megan?
How many of these do you have total?
Justin, can you, sorry, I apologize. Justin is our maintenance supervisor. We have several in different funds, so like wastewater treatment plant has one and they're sort of spread out. Justin, can you give us the exact?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. So we have currently five of these single axle dump truck plows. Then we have the one tandem axle plow, which we refer to as the ten wheeler. That's the one you see running those arterial routes that Ryan mentioned. The intention with that additional one, typically our routes are north-south and then the four quadrants. So that was the intent with that additional ten wheeler plow as well. And like Ryan said, several of these single axle trucks are aged, so these two replacements will, will add to that.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, and, and when we come to replacing these ones, we, we will be looking at strategically so that we're maximizing our return value of them. We won't be keeping them for 20, 15 years, but looking at a better turnaround so that we can strategically replace them and get the most cost-effective approach.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion to authorize staff to purchase two new single axle trucks.
Second.
Moving seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Under new business tonight, I know Mike Urban has legislative priorities, has a new business item.
Excellent, yes. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, Council. Uh, last Friday at 3:30, I sent everybody an email regarding the legislative priorities. I apologize, we were really trying to get that as part of the council agenda, but it wasn't until Friday afternoon, we heard from our last representative confirming, yes, the 15th of November would be best for them. They were really struggling with traveling in December after hours and the lateness of that whole piece as far as going into the legislative session goes. So now that November 15th has been set for when we're going to have a visit, I wanted to draw council's attention back to the 2022 legislative priorities and get some time to go over those and see if they need updating for '23. But I was trying to get a feel for, should we do it the same way we've been doing it where we're going to need a whole X plus hours or can I just put it on a regular agenda for a discussion topic based on where we are with this and what's been accomplished?
I, I would think it'd be great for a regular agenda and, you know, it'd be nice if we could, I, I was thinking, you know, give us a month to think about it, so put it in September within a final approval by October so that there's a month for staff to prepare for our legislators and also for us to prepare for the legislators.
Okay. With that being the case, I'm looking at September 27th as being completely devoid of any agenda items right now, but we will be having a meeting that date, so I'll slide in a first round of discussion for that so we can get this actually adopted and out to the legislators before they come into town on the 15th and we have several opportunities to do that in October. So is that the consensus of the, the group?
Yes, thank you.
One question.
Okay.
Now, I know last time when we were talking about legislators, we wanted to look at different meetings, I thought, that didn't bring them in during one of the most dangerous times in November snows, you know, December, so on. Is that, are we still looking at that?
We are kind of, and I think without talking out of church too much, I will say my impression of those discussions is that even though Representative Schmick and I are running unopposed, they're still keeping a full campaign schedule. So maybe next year it might make more sense because the election is the seventh, I believe, this year and they're already coming in on the 15th. So yeah, it's very much on my mind because I do want to get them down into some of these projects and show them what we're doing and try to get them excited about it to come do that, but getting a commitment from them has been a little, I, I could push harder. How about that?
No, you don't need to. I just wanted to make sure that I remembered correctly that we had had that discussion.
We did.
All right.
And Josh Schmick was in town today doing some things along with Kathy McMorsh Rogers. They were all making contacts in different places. Any other, so that works out all right for the rest of you in terms of the schedule. Okay? Yes. Francis?
So I had one, and this is really dovetailing in the business that we did, did tonight, where we, we, you know, basically approved $9.1 billion, moving forward on it, related to our downtown, of which that includes two major highways, of which, you know, we're, we're fronting the money. And so what I'd like to get is, is request the council if you'd be in agreement for us to ask staff to start conversations with Department of Transportation to see, since we're doing these improvements for departments of transportation's property with the state highway, is there anything that we could get in exchange for it that they'd be willing? Now, it may not be that they have it, you know, it may be that they're aware of some funding that might be able to help add to our project. It might also be that rather than funding, they have land, when one of the things on our current legislative agenda has to do with our rail lines within the city, you know, maybe they would do land swap based on how much we invest in, in the, in the downtown related to the highway, you know, in exchange for the rails or, or something like that. But I, my thought is if, if we're looking at how, how do we leverage this, this could be an opportunity to leverage this with Department of Transportation, but it would take agreement of the council to, you know, ask staff to, to pursue this.
Megan?
I couldn't agree more. I think we do need to leverage this. We are making a, a major investment in what is essentially DOT.
investment in what is essentially DOT. So, yeah, if the staff can look into what would be some of those options, including rail, our rail banking, but even, you know, the bypass, I don't think we want to rule that out, so.
I know Clayton mentioned that he's been meeting with the consultants on the north bypass coming up in the next couple of weeks. So, that's another part of the Department of Transportation. But, so I've heard a couple, the head nods, yes. So, staff, put that on your agenda, that sometime we can get some leverage. We would really like to have leverage with the Department of Transportation. Okay. With that, is there any other new business that come before the council tonight? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn? But before we adjourn, this is the last meeting of Laura McAlune here, of McAlune Law. We've been with her through different law firms. We've stayed with Laura, because that was a fantastic thing. And tonight, we have Thad O'Sullivan, who's highly recommended by Laura, and Thad has been here before to help us through these things, and we've signed a contract with that. And I did write the mayor of Grand Island, Nebraska, and congratulating him on being able to have Laura, and I'm just going to read the last paragraph. "Laura is personable, rare for some attorneys, works well with staff, mayor and council, comes up with great suggestions and legal fixes, has an eye for details, has a sense of humor, is innovative in her approach, respectful of city budgets and the process, and just a wonderful person. And even though my dad was born in Lumis, Nebraska, and my uncles went to the University of Nebraska, and I sat all night as a child with my parents at Grand Island train station waiting for a trip back to California, it's still hard to let Laura leave. I've looked, but I can't find an ordinance, a resolution, a bylaw, a code, a memorandum of understanding, or a contract that would prevent her from taking her job at Grand Island. And I told you, she's a great attorney. So, I hope you and the council appreciate what a treasure you now have." And Laura told me that he actually used part of the letter in her confirmation.
He read the whole thing, which, so I sat through that.
And I just used the last paragraph. And they still appointed her, so that was...
They did, despite that.
I don't know if the mayor there has a sense of humor, but at least, anyway, we thank you, Laura, for your fantastic service for this community, and we want to applaud you for it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
And thank you, Thad, for filling in.
Thank you.
Okay. And with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?